Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I would like to call this meeting to order. Director Kelly, would you please do a roll call?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Mayor James?
Yeah.
Councilman Goldsmith?
Here.
Councilman Trolinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all please stand for the present- for the presentation of the colors by the Air Force Junior R O T C color guard from Chopticon High School?
All. Present colors.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Council, attached are the minutes. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Did I skip the agenda? Let me look at that. I would. Council, would you please look at the agenda? I would entertain a motion to accept the gender agenda as presented? Yes?
Do I have a second?
I'll start with the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council, attached of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Madam Mayor, I move that we present the meeting minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Right here.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. As you can see, we have some fantastic young leaders here. We have our junior mayor, Zoe Mayo, here, and we have our junior mayor pro temp, her friend Sydney Pennycook. Last year, there were, every year they run, Maryland Municipal League runs a contest, if I were mayor, and it's for fourth grades and all 157 municipalities. They go on to a statewide competition, but locally here, we have Matula and we have Mitchell. We have, this year, we have A and S and also Saint Mary's, Bryant Town, that all compete in this essay. And the winner gets to be mayor for the day. So back a few months ago, Zoe, junior mayor Zoe, was treated to dinner by John Flatley at Chick-fil-A. Our La Plata Police Department picked them up in Cruisers and they went over and had lunch there. And they had quite the tour of Chick-fil-A and made their own ice cream cones. One was fantastic. They did not put mine on film because, no, I will not be working there. That is not a career for me. I cannot make an ice cream cone. And they had to apologize to the guests that they gave it to because it was not looking pretty. But with Zoe's essay, as I said, not only did she enter statewide, but she entered locally here. The theme of last year's essay was soul of Maryland. The students were asked to look around their community and convey what is unique and special about it. Specifically, if they were mayor, what slogan would they create for their town? What special facts, traits, or cultures would they like to celebrate? And what would they do to draw visitors to their town? Zoe's essay was quite amazing. And she is going to share what she wrote and why it was chosen as the winning essay. And by the way, it wasn't chosen by me. It was by an independent committee. So I was even more thrilled to read it when it was presented as the winner. Zoe, it's all yours.
I'm mayor for a day. I would like, I would make La Plata safer by putting sidewalks in every neighborhood and connecting them together. Just think, if La Plata is safer with more sidewalks tourists might visit, I will encourage tourists with my slogan, let's go La Plata, walk on. Three years ago, my sister got hit by a car on her scooter in my neighborhood. I saw her rolling under the car and the helicopter flying her way to the hospital. Every day I walk down the same street and wonder why there are no sidewalks. Currently, I think there is no standard for sidewalks in neighborhoods. For example, in my grandparents' neighborhood, there are two sidewalks, but none in mine. In my grandparents' neighborhood, I see people exercising outside with no fear of traffic. I would like this stress-free experience in all neighborhoods. Not only do sidewalks keep people safer, but they also encourage visitors and tourism and can lead families to historical downtown places in La Plata. In the historical district, families can enjoy events, local shops, the town hall, and spend time outside while walking or riding bicycles safely back and forth. As mayor, I will lead the city council and work with the city manager to make sidewalks a policy within neighborhoods and along streets. In addition to working with the government officials, I will serve as the face of our city and work closely with the public. As mayor, I want to have safe areas for families to walk and enjoy the neighborhoods and town without worrying about cars.
This is from a fourth grader, now a fifth grader, and that was very powerful. So thank you very much for sharing that with us. And now we're going to hear from the junior mayor pro temp on a proclamation that we have this month.
April 16th is the start of National Volunteer Week. I would like to read the proclamation recognizing all those who volunteer. Whereas every community can affect positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big and small. And whereas 1.7 million Marylanders volunteer each year, providing 181.9 million hours of service and an estimated economic value of more than $4.3 billion. And whereas thousands of volunteers working in our community utilize their time and talent daily to make a real difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly. And whereas volunteers can connect with the local community service opportunities through hundreds of local nonprofit organizations. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and the giving of oneself and service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas our volunteer force is great treasure. And during this week, we recognize the commitment to serving the greater good. And now therefore, we, the council of the town La Plata, proclaim April 16th through the 22nd, 2023, as National Volunteer Week in the town of La Plata, in appreciation of the work, commitment, and dedication of our volunteers, and urge all citizens, regardless of age, to become involved and volunteer in the community. Signed by the council, Mayor James, Councilman Goldsmith, Councilman Trolinger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, and Councilwoman, Councilman Jenkins.
Excellent. You know what? I got it. Thank you.
All right. Now we come to the part of our meeting where we welcome the public to speak. We ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight?
So we do have someone that signed, two people that signed up, so Ms. Sims.
Hello, Madam Mayor and the town council of La Plata. I am not a resident of La Plata, but I am a resident of Charles County. To everyone here, thank you first of all for allowing the opportunity to speak. My name is Von Tasha Sims. I am also the nonprofit owner of Jair's Work Group. Also, do a lot of community activism here in the county. I'm also elected in my own right as well. Let me, he's actually here on behalf of several things here to be cleared up and to clear the air a little bit here amongst the town council and the mayor of La Plata here. Initially, my grandson was Jair Lee. He passed away here in your park in 2015. As some of you may know or very well should know. And since that time, I've been advocating for a lot of services that you have located right here in your town, from your hospital to your detention center, to DSS, to your sheriff department, to a lot of different agencies here to improve services here, not only for residents in La Plata, but also for residents across Charles County, because we do use all of your essential services here that's located for all residents located here in the town of La Plata. So with that being said, let me note that your responsibility not only lies here to your faithful local residents, taxpayers in the town of La Plata, but also to ensure that we are taking care of residents across Charles County, because everyone comes here, because you do have your services here. And also with that being said, I want to state that when my grandson did pass away at the park here in 2015, Will's Memorial Park, it was a very unfortunate incident. Please know I try to utilize every single essential service that you have available here in your jurisdiction in Charles County to assist my family in a time of crisis. It was unfortunate that we fell short and I lost my grandson in the process. But with that being said, I want to be clear, at no time did I ever leave any trees or even ever tried to do anything illegally or by permission of the town council in regards to Will's Memorial Park, as in regards to trying to plant a tree in memory of him or try to get, create a memorial or anything along those lines. It was stated and agreed upon back then when Peter Murphy was the commissioner president here in the county. I had a service there with your chief of police, who I love dearly. He came along and they all agreed that we wanted to try to do something there. I wrote your council on several different occasions, back when Mr. Mears was here on the council, and I never received a response. So respectfully, I would ask you to know and understand that at no time have I ever tried to do anything without your permission in Will's Memorial Park. I would appreciate the opportunity for myself and my family to be a part of that process if you decided that you wanted to do something at that park in memory of my grandson. And I would appreciate to have the opportunity to work with you and do something that would not only be for my family or my grandson, but also for the community, because a lot of people have asked and been waiting for something to happen there at that park. So with that being said, thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. And we have one more speaker. Ms. Wanda, I'm sorry, could you please state your name and whether you're in the incorporated town limit? And hold your meetings until minutes to three minutes, please?
Okay, hello, everyone, and thank you very much for the opportunity to allow me to say a few words to support Von Tasha and her request for a memorial at Will's Park for her grandson. I support her. Matter of fact, I met her when her grandson did pass away at the park due to the mental illness of her daughter. And I think that this will be important to have a memorial for her son, because mental illness is a very serious case in Charles County. And if we had a memorial of a little boy who unfortunately died during a mental illness crisis, and it is in a public place, especially a place where he died, I think it'll wake up a lot of people. It will show that we support the mental illness population and that we are determined to do what we can in La Plata as well as Charles County. So I'd just like for you to really see if you can work with Von Tasha. The only thing she wants is to maybe have a tree put on that property with a little sign that really dedicated an honor and memory of Jair and to support and work on the mental illness crisis that we have in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And it is quite unfortunate. My, I remember that day very clearly. So, and I'm sorry you had to go through that. But I know the Parks and Rec have been looking at programs with that. So you are not far off of our minds at all. And I know the chief is one that is, works very closely with services and resources here in the town. So let's see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item on the agenda is a presentation on transportation from Mr. Kendrick. The floor is yours.
Let me push my button. Now you can hear me. Great. So I believe Kelly's going to flip through this. I want to talk through several projects that are active that we're involved with, you know, as your engineering consultant. So we can start with, we'll just go through these one by one. Next slide, please. So Charles Street, a lot of stuff going on on Charles Street from the global larger SHA project down to things like the flashing beacons. We are told yesterday that somewhere in the May 15th to June 20, June 30th timeframe, the beacons will be, at least the first beacon will be installed. We had a little snag that I think we've just resolved in the last few minutes on the, on the second beacon. But there is flashing beacon at the end of the tunnel or light at the end of the tunnel, as it may be. So Willow Lane, this is not one that we've been leading, but Leonard, on behalf of the Pine Grove developer, has been leading. I think we're looking at probably a year until that's, that's up, unfortunately. In addition to just general design review delays, supply chain on acquiring a pole and mast arm of that size that's necessary, some other right-of-way issues, they've just got a lot of little issues to work through. So my suspicion is that we're looking at early 2023. And then finally, I just wanted to offer a comment on, on 301, I'm sorry, on the Charles Street project, the global project, which is that, especially as we've been working through the Southwest Area Management Plan and looking at that intersection of 301 itself with, with six. I think if left to their own devices, SHA will be very focused on the streetscape elements and miss some of the bigger traffic issues on either end, whether it be 488 or at Charles Street. And while I know that your initial intent was to focus very much on the streetscape elements and getting some of the traffic operations cleaned up, they're going, if you indeed want them to look at 488 and at 301, they're going to need to be pushed directly, like in writing, you know, not just verbally, because the, my sense is that the staff, the consultant staff feels like they've been given a scope that is, you know, here to here. And, and they're not being asked to look at that. So if that is indeed what you all want, then I would urge you to put that in writing to them. Happy to help with that. So that's what's going on on Charles Street. On Washington Avenue, we have been working with the county to get a joint agreement on sidewalk planning and design from, we're going to look all the way from Rosewick down to, to Charles Street. I suspect in the end we'll be focused on the area from Hawthorne down to Charles Street as a, as a starting point. But we think, you know, Mr. Manuel is working on his side of that. The county's working on their side. Hopefully by June 1st, we'll be underway. You know, the, the big issue there is going to be right-of-way. And so we've retained a right-of-way consultant, not necessarily to do any acquisition work, but to just advise us on the cleanest way to move these through in a very efficient manner. And there's very little that's efficient about the right-of-way acquisition process. But hopefully if we get some good advice from this subconsultant, we'll at least have a path forward on that, on those sidewalks. And then related and very timely, we, in another venue, have been the lead consultant on a Vision Zero plan for Charles County, zero deaths on the roads by 2035. In Charles County is the goal. It's an aspirational goal. It's something to be pushing towards. But we are wrapping that up and I know Mr. Jenkins, Director Harrington, were on the task force, attended one or two of the meetings that we had. We will be submitting that report. That should not say May 15th. That should say April 15th. Have we passed that yet? No, that is what, third Friday. That is Friday, yes. With all goes well, this evening I'll finish editing and we will submit it back to Tri-County Council by, by Friday. In order to then qualify for implementation funding, under USDOT's program, a municipality seeking funding or seeking to piggyback off of a county's plan to seek funding needs to endorse the Vision Zero plan. It is very generic. It says that all people should be safe on the roads. We should have more sidewalk programs, slower traffic, DUI enforcement, et cetera. So it's not really committing you anything. It's just a unintended vehicle to get access to the federal funds. And then there's a lot of things. I know, for example, you've talked about, you know, some immediate intersection safety improvements that could be done with bollards and sidewalk art and flex posts and paint and all. Those are eligible as demonstration projects. Last year, USDOT received 477 applications for those types of projects. And how many do you think they funded, Mr. Jenkins? 477.
Wow.
Yes. So it's, yes. So this is one that we need to, you know, work with you all to stay in front of. It's the demonstration part of the program is kind of a stretch of the congressional intent, which doesn't happen very often. But we have been able to work this program in other jurisdictions to get some quick build stuff on the ground. So hopefully we'll be able to do that here if you all wish to proceed. Okay, what's next? Southwest Access Management Plan. So we've not taken this to the Planning Commission yet, but I wanted to just kind of come back and summarize this, where we are and what we've been doing, and, and give you a sense as to what we think the next steps are and then get into some more detail with it with the Planning Commission at the May meeting, I believe, is what we're, we're targeting. But, you know, as you'll, and this is going to relate to the adequate public facilities discussion you're also going to have in May and June. So I think it's important to just kind of walk you through some of this. So, you know, in the Southwest, if you include the units that already been constructed in, in, I got this backwards again, in Steeplechase, I'm sorry. I apologize every day. I'm sorry. If you include the 392 units that have already been included in Steeple, been built in Steeplechase, you are looking at the potential of about 1,600 residential units in the Southwest quadrant, south of Maryland 6, west of 301. Now, those are obviously not going to happen all at once, but, you know, over 10, 15, 20 years, you know, some reasonable share, as, as you can imagine, will occur. And it will have attendant traffic impacts. Next slide. So you asked, the Planning Commission asked that we take a look at what opportunities may be to improve traffic operations, access, mobility. There were community concerns, specifically at Steeplechase around emergency egress, because there is only one entrance and exit today. Some unsafe turning movements and, which will only be exacerbated as more of those developments come online. So that's what we've been looking at for the past few months. Excuse me, next slide. And I think it's important to point out, especially as we get into the APF discussion, that none of these developments by themselves would tip any intersections to failing, especially when they come in as phased projects with 60 units here and 90 units there, kind of taken by themselves. They don't really trigger a traditional traffic impact approach. But when you add them up, right, you start, you definitely see intersections that hit a failing level of service, whether it is the unsignaled intersections today, for example, at Glen Albion or down at Old Stagecoach or even at Catalpa itself, you know, really start in the build-out. Once you get into a good chunk of the build-out, you see some real failing traffic conditions. So as you think about the APF discussion in a few months, or in the next couple of months, think about the kind of frog in the boiling water, right, as it gets hotter and hotter. You know the story. Thank you. Thank you. And not the sledgehammer, right? So we're going to come back with an approach. So we, again, we've been working through a series of technical options. We're now working on an implementation strategy. Let me just preview one or two things that is in there on the next slide. I think it's the next slide. You know, we had looked at initially, this was the comprehensive plan alignment, was to come all the way from 301, where the hub will be, all the way down using Quailwood Parkway as the spine, and then through what is now known as the La Grange Project, and then through Steeplechase and on to Stagecoach. The way that Steeplechase was designed did not really honor that through alignment in the first instance. And so we've had to come up with some alternatives that would meet the goals of mobility and safety, but not rely on a through connector, especially because the main piece of doing so would be a bridge over the stream there, which is more feasible than we thought in the initial piece, but it has real impacts on, or is highly impacted by the way that Steeplechase was designed. And we just don't think it would get enough benefit for you. So while we think it's feasible to do so, it's probably not the best long-term solution for, for this part of the area. So then next slide, we have a whole other series of, you know, spaghetti options that, that make improvements. And I'm not going to go through, through all of them, except to say that we're now arriving at kind of a series of smaller one-off solutions that incrementally will change the script here. Next slide. And, you know, some of them can be directly tied to a particular development. But again, most of them, most of these solutions are things that are probably beyond the, beyond the impact of any specific phase of any specific development as they come down the line. So for example, you know, the, an intersection improvement at 301, to clear up some of that stuff is, is probably going to be a couple of million dollars, right? Probably more than any one developer would be able to absorb or should absorb, because there is traffic there already. And so the incremental costs need to be born somewhere and probably should be spread out among all the development. An intersection improvement at Catalpa, for example, will benefit both Steeplechase and Stagecoach. Steeplechase is kind of out the door in terms of its entitlement process. So we, you're limited in how we can, can approach that. There may be opportunities. So, excuse me, there are options, and I don't think I put the map in with all of them on the next slide. But it's going to take SHA, the Planning Commission, this council, getting a little creative, either by, you know, working together. And I will say, in all candor, you know, this council, Planning Commission, asks those developers to work together to try and work through some of these, and I'm disappointed that that didn't happen. But here we are. And so we're going to have to just find another approach to get this done. And that could be a major facilities fee. It could be an adequate public facilities fee. It could be some other tool, but, or we could get to voluntary commitments to do things, but I don't know that we're going to get there. Excuse me. And then finally, why don't I pause there before I get to the bike way and see if there's any, if that's okay? Well done.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, thank you for providing the update. I have a number of questions, but let me start first. I have a number of questions, but let me start first with if Charles Street, there was a delay in the proposed signal at Willow and Charles because of the Pine Grove. Is there a reason for that delay?
So, you know, Pine Grove and their traffic consultant have done pretty much everything in their power to keep it moving. The SHA at the district level has undergone some staffing changes, and there's been some real voids in getting approvals done and then ping pong between the Office of Traffic and Safety at headquarters and the district. So I did not get an update this morning. I'm hoping that that sign off has occurred, but it's just a lot of ping pong right now.
So will it?
And then and then I should say the supply chain issue.
I'm sorry.
And then the supply, on the implementation side, the supply chain issue will will hold up a little bit, although the developer, to their credit, has gone ahead and and asked their contractor to get moving on that order, so it doesn't hold it up too much.
So we can expect a year from now?
If I had to hazard a guess, I would say, you know, sometime early in twenty twenty four.
That's disappointing, but okay. The worst in every sidewalks. So is, will there be or or when can we look at an MOU with the county and 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 also before I forget this, i- is that project in their CIP or not for sidewalks?
Excuse me. I do not believe that project is currently in their CIP. We're trying to figure out the money the county has to apply towards the project right now. There's a little bit of a disagreement, friendly disagreement, we'll say, as to how much money the county has to appropriate towards this project. The MOU would then sort of describe how that money would pass to the town so that we can engage Mead and Hunt to foretake that project on the town's behalf. So we're working through the specifics of that. We hope to have something back to you. We have a draft MOU. We have a draft scope of services from Mead and Hunt. So if we can get those, the stars to align, we hope to have something back to you, hopefully early May.
Okay, thank you. And then the Charles, the county strategic roadway safety plan. So do you and I know I went to one meeting, but unfortunately I had to miss the second one, so I I apologize for that. But are they going to adopt a a vision zero policy, the county? Do you expect, I know you can't speak for them, but I'm just curious.
I think, yeah, adopting a vision zero policy is an aspirational goal, and then following through with a number of objectives around updating the land development code, heightened enforcement efforts, some design changes and arterials that would be SHA's active participation. Yes, I think those are, they're all in there and there's a desire to proceed. The county has a new public works director who's very dynamic and very committed to this work. So I I feel positive that the Board of Commissioners, when asked to approve it, will and then take the next step to seek implementation money.
And then finally, on the Southwest Access Plan, this is going to sound ignorant, but on that one slide, what does forty six KSF mean?
Forty six thousand square feet.
Thank you.
Commercial.
And then I, though, going back to the beginning, where you were suggesting that the council or the town should provide some kind of policy guidance to SHA when they do the as they start the Charles Street study, I would concur with that. And just a final comment that that at least speaking of one, my aspiration for that would be that it would be a complete street that it's that it's looked at not as strictly a frankly, a highway to get from point A to point B where folks speed through downtown La Plata because it is our main street. So streetscape isn't very important, fully recognizing there are serious congestion issues. Some of that has to do with traffic signals and whatever, but and distracts it. So I'm hoping that with all due respect, that there's that there's more than just an engineering solution to this. Thank you.
I will say I've consistently reinforced with our design team that we want to look at it from a pedestrian level of service as opposed to a vehicular level of service, that if we start with the pedestrian, the vehicle will be secondary. It is our main street and we want it to be the focus of our sort of downtown improvement project. So it starts with safety. So we will continue to press that with the consultant. And Jamie, if you have anything else you would like to add?
No, I again, I would just say that, you know, that the consultant takes their direction from the staff, just like I try and do with you all. Sometimes with more success than others, right? Something like that, yeah. But, you know, the 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 staff is only, excuse me, the consultant is only going to move on their scope and and aggressiveness as far as the the agency tells them to. And so if if the town has a particular set of ideas or concepts or goals in mind, I would just suggest that you put them in writing. Having round tables and workshops is helpful, but memories get short and words get muddled. So.
Thank you.
Questions from council?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Thank you. Matt Traunler Ward two had a couple of questions for you, starting with the cooperation with SHA. We know they've got a survey out for our residents. Do we have access to that data that they collect and do they make that known as we're going through this streetscape process? Because I know a lot of residents are thankfully taking it to heart, and I know a lot of their concerns are with safety, as Mr. Manuel said, but also just access bicycling, et cetera. But it'd be helpful to know what our residents are are putting out there for the state so we can join in that effort specifically to their needs.
It's my experience that the consultant and SHA will typically summarize and make that available.
Do we have a timeframe of when that might be complete, just the polling portion and when we might be able to review it?
I believe they're scheduled to do a public meeting sometime in May, so I'm not sure if they would end the survey prior to that to sort of compile the data and sort of present it at that time, because hopefully some of that input would be used in sort of formulating a response to how they want to address that corridor. I think they anticipate coming up with three to four maybe scenarios, street scenarios. And so that that meeting in May should be very informative and I think based on conversations that take place at that time, maybe we'll lead them down a path to go into a more fully developed option, if you will.
And and the other thing is, I would imagine that our residents are giving more expansive probably comments than what the SHA will probably use, but we could use as council to, you know, towards our comprehensive plan. So that's all I'm asking. If we get kind of fuller context, if instead of just a summary as to their goals may be helpful. I don't know if we can can ask for that or not.
So, Madam Mayor, I did attend that meeting with the consultants and we had public stakeholders as well as residents present. And the plan is, if you go to that website, you can see all of the information that's been input. They're not actually making decisions. They're actually taking the comments from everybody that's participating in those roundtable discussions and the comments that they get off of the website, and they're putting them in different places so that they can come up with a plan. They're not trying to come up with a plan on their own. They're taking everything and all of the input that's been given to them by the residents and the town staff. I attended, Stugger attended. And so all of that information, they have this big board that they're working with, and they're drafting it as they go and taking the comments into consideration.
Have they compartmentalizing per topic, I would assume?
Absolutely.
Gotcha.
And and for quadrant, we actually walked Charles Street and they took information from that as well and made I mean, they took extensive notes. The process was really amazing to see in detail.
Excellent. Thank you. Other question as to you, you mentioned traffic failure. How is traffic failure defined? And I know part of this, you know, with the planned development slide, this is just the southwest quadrant. We talked about this previously, is not taking, I mean, this, sorry about these trips for this area alone, but it's not including Pine Grove. It's not including other parts of town that are still going to be accessing this roadway. So how do we define potential traffic failure down the line?
Sure. So I did reference, as you said, the the sixteen hundred that are in the southwest. The background traffic model we use does include everything else in the town. So it is, we didn't pull out the solutions that may be specific to a Pine Grove or or somewhere else, but those are, they are baked into our future year models. And I would say, you know, kind of on the the parallel here would be on Pine Grove. We have all of that traffic analysis. And so we know what the solutions are for for Pine Grove on now on both sides of at least two of the four corners and the the other two corners are a little less active from a development perspective today. So we are, they're baked in. If that helps, does that answer the question?
Well, that's, I mean, it's not in these numbers, but what is traffic failure defined as?
So in this, in this case, we are using a more traditional level of service traffic analysis because it's because the southwest is so isolated, relatively speaking, from a pedestrian network standpoint, et cetera, we focused on the vehicular level of service and not pedestrian measures. If this were you know, on the other side of three oh one, we might be more focused on on multimodal measures. So at this point, we're looking at, you know, volume, capacity, volume of capacity, traveler delay, things like that. You know, in the in the peak hours.
Okay, but I mean.
We we have a rubric that I can, when I do the report, you'll you'll see there's a rubric of level service A through F and, you know, A is free flow, excuse me, A is free flow traffic and F is delay of more than ninety seconds beyond an initial, beyond an initial traffic signal cycle. So it's largely tied to delay at intersections and intersections being defined as both signalized and unsignalized. And so I might say, Kelly, if we could go back a slide or two, this goes to a an argument, one more please. Okay, one more, two more. One more. There we go. You know, it goes back to a question of how traffic impact studies are are conducted. And, you know, if you define traffic impact studies too narrowly, you end up with results that don't account account for the cumulative impacts. And so, for example, there is a development that has argued that because they are not required to count a certain turning movement individually and rather to account for that turning movement in the context of all of the turning movements at intersection, that there's no mitigation required, even though people would effectively be trapped in that development for multiple minutes, let's say. Well, that's a flaw in the traffic impact study process that we very difficult to cure by just rewriting and rewriting and rewriting regulations because it'll always find that. And that's why we're heading down this path and recommending a cumulative approach and not trying to tweak every thirty two units that come through and every left turn movement that happened on Thursdays when it's raining. Right? Let's deal with this in a cumulative global perspective.
Thank you so much.
This wouldn't be fun if I didn't make it funny. He's having a ball. Yeah, Brent can't wait to go home. Okay, La Plata Bike Way. So we are at a moment of truth in this project, very excited about how we're moving forward. So just as you may recall, this runs Willow Lane from the schools across Charles Street to four eighty eight and Radio Station Road up to Laurel Springs Regional Park. You recall that you got a grant from the state about a year ago to get the design work for this moving. Next slide, please. And we are at the point at which, I'm not going to say design is completed, but design is completed enough that we can apply for construction funding come the May fifteenth bikeways and transportation alternatives program deadlines. And with any luck at all, we would be able to be under construction sometime in in early to mid twenty twenty four. Next slide, please. So, you know, we did the, we've done the intermediate design plans. SHA approved our request to your earlier point about all of Maryland six to take the speed limit down to twenty five as you approach town. Excuse me. Or maybe a better way to say it is they haven't objected yet, but we're pretty far into the design process for them to not pick up on that. Now, there are some coordination issues. So this, the signal at Willow Lane, obviously, we've got some work to do with the school system around the high school and how some of the pedestrian crossings are going to work. We're meeting with the utilities tomorrow, try to figure out the best way to access Laurel Springs Regional Park, avoid some environmental impacts and have something that's an off street facility, so it's not right on the high speed part of Radio Station Road. So we're work, we're working with Tim Drummond at Parks to to do that, to figure that out, actually walking the site with them tomorrow as well. So, you know, we we did not get back any showstopper comments, which was good, and SHA has been very responsive and very timely in their in their comments, as has the county and the school system. Next slide. So where do we go from here? There are some right of way impacts. We continue to kind of manage and mitigate and minimize those. We do not anticipate that there are going to be any real costs associated with resolving those impacts from a compensation to property owner perspective. There is going to be costs to just going through the right of way process and every easement and every, you know, right of entry agreement is going to take its course and and that we cost there. But I don't anticipate there will be any costs associated with property acquisition at this point. There are some slight utility relocations. We're still trying to figure out with Bobby, for example, how we can avoid a fire hydrant or two. You know, there's a possible pole near the Clark's Run Bridge that we may need to resolve. I noticed that Clark's is misspelled there. Sorry. So we're we're working on that tomorrow with with Specco. So the there'll be some work that we want to get done early before we get into the official SHA process to minimize our overall delay work. I can't tell you what the detailed scope of that is yet, but if we were to let that run into the SHA funded portion of the project, it would cause a very slow process to occur. Next slide. So last year, when I came and talked to you, I said I thought the project budget was probably on the order of one point six million dollars. I was pleasantly surprised surprised to learn that I was about right on that. Excuse me. With contingency, I believe the total comes out on construction side to about one point seven and a half, one point eight million. The better news, however, is that last year I told you I thought the town share could be anywhere between twenty and fifty percent. Today, I think I can tell you that if all goes well and we've had productive discussions with SHA, the town share could be down in the ten percent neighborhood or less for construction costs. There's still, you know, some more soft costs to be dealt with. We have some design change orders because of Pine Grove and some right of way issues, but in all, you know, we were talking about, you know, potentially a five to seven hundred thousand dollar match last year, and now we're talking about probably a seventy five to a hundred thousand dollar match this year. So hopefully that's that's good news. You probably don't get people coming and telling you that often. But, you know, obviously those have to be approved by the by the, the grants have to be approved by the state, but they're very well aware of of where we are. We are definitely in the queue. I think this is probably Charles County's only project in the queue this year, so that will be very helpful. In terms of the count of the to be the town's cost, you've authorized about three hundred and twenty five. No, I'm sorry, I can't see my own slides. I apologize. Can I? You you have about, we think about two hundred and twenty to two hundred and fifty thousand in local costs still to complete. That includes the seventy five thousand dollar or so match. So we're, you know, from my view, we're in really good shape. We think there are partnership opportunities. You know, we, I will say again that we would really like to think that the Pine Grove folks could finish that section between Clark's Run and and Willow Lane or Heritage Green Parkway, a few hundred feet. They're going to have to make some adjustments in that area anyway. When they do the traffic signal, you know, that would certainly help bring down the cost and reduce some of the complexity of the the project. There's a piece at AgroCopia that the developer, I think by agreement, needs to complete between can't remember the name of the street, the last street north between there and the high school. We've at this point assumed that we will construct that and seek reimbursement from him as he would have to otherwise do so. You know, there's certainly some some things that the school system benefits from. As a matter of fact, they had looked at building part of this many years back and decided to hold off, but so we think there could be a school system partnership. And certainly the county government, a lot of this being along their roadway, there could be some assistance there as well. All of those are things not for me to deal with, me to plant seeds and you all to decide if they should grow or not. And then last slide, oh, and so I go back one, sorry, Kelly. So again, we're going to seek with your approval, funding from the bikeways program and the transportation. Again, we're going to seek with your approval, funding from the Bike Ways Program and the Transportation Alternatives Program and match those up. And that should get your contribution down in the seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar neighborhood in terms of the construction itself. Okay, now next slide. So I I setting aside your official approval processes, what we're, we've been talking to Mr. Manuel about is that we need to get our right-of-way team moving on on the plat adjustments. Um, we have a change order uh that we need to submit based on Pine Grove. Uh, when we submitted this, we assumed that Pine Grove would be developing that design work. Um, we are looking to hold a public meeting, perhaps in conjunction with the S H A project, uh perhaps in conjunction with Planning Commission on May second. Um, and then we've got some environmental permits to to move through, but we think we've we've tamped down any additional environmental mitigation as well, so. Um, I think that's, that is the end. I don't know if you're looking for formal approvals or not at the head.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Kendrick uh sort of identified the need to provide a change order with Mead and Hunt uh to our existing contract. Uh, let me just read through you some of the items that will be uh for the most part effectuated as part of that change order, which would be apply for construction grants uh which he talked to, uh initiate utility relocations, which he spoke to during the presentation. Uh, begin the process of securing easements right-of-ways, once again, spoke to that. Uh, negotiate with developer Pine Grove, which he just finished discussing. So all those are elements that would have to be addressed within a change order that our current uh agreement with Mead and Hunt does not cover. Um, so if it's the will of council uh to move this project forward, then we can negotiate with Mead and Hunt to bring back to you that change order uh for your considerations.
We're looking for consensus. Councilman Chalmers?
I, I think that's okay with me.
Is there going to be a cost associated with the change order?
Yes, oh, yeah.
So we had, we had said we were going to make this to ninety percent design enough to be able to submit the grant. That's where we're going to end up, um, and we excluded at the time, you know, anything associated with, you know, right of acquisition, uh environmental permitting, and it's kind of like what you wouldn't typically do to ninety percent.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to approve it, I'm just making sure that we're within interest so that Mr. Kendrick can uh draft the change order and he'll become back to council for your consideration.
Amen.
Good for me, thank you.
We have a consensus to move forward.
Mr. Kendrick, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When do you think this project will like take action?
I think we could realistically be under construction this time next year, maybe a little bit longer. Uh, but I think we could be turning at least some earth around utilities in the spring. Uh, assuming that S H A agrees to fund it, I'm. May I ask, what neighborhood do you live in?
Um Hawkins Gate?
Hmm, okay. Make sure that we're looking in that area for pedestrian safety.
Next on our agenda is our budget calendar. Mr. Manuel, would you please take this one?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Uh, included in your agenda pack, and I'm sure Kelly will bring up on the screen, will be the amended agenda calendar uh which will indicate uh April eighteenth, we will be discussing the enterprise fund budget and the twenty-fifth uh the general fund. So that was flip-flopped due to uh scheduling conflicts with some of our our department heads.
Stahl is here tonight to address counsel on three matters. The floor is yours, Director Stahl.
Thank you all very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Assistant Mayor, uh it's certainly nice to have some new faces to address. We, hopefully, it's a much friendlier face. I I bring before you three items tonight. Um, we have first, um, the uh uniform contract from Centas. We have been uh using Centas for our uniforms in public works for many years. Um, we have always piggybacked on numerous different other contracts. In looking at this contract, actually, it was interesting. They mentioned that we should consider piggybacking on the State of Maryland contract. And so that we could save some money to do that. The funny thing is, when we really looked into that, Maryland is actually piggybacking on Prince William County contract. And so um what we're doing is actually piggybacking on that contract. Uh, I bring before you tonight because this will save the town about eight thousand dollars a year in our Centas pricing. I think it's a very reasonable bid, as you can see from the background that we've given you on the other contracts. Um, there are a lot of other governmental entities using the same contract. So we think it's very reasonable for the town to piggyback on this. They're certainly willing to give us the same rates and it saves us money. So I'd like to move forward with a new contract uh with Centas based on this pricing and would hope that uh we could move forward with that. The second item that I bring before you tonight is the um Klein's Services Contract. As most of you know, every year we have to clean out the Willow Lane Pump Station. And that is no easy job. The wet well is forty-five feet deep. Uh, the amount of grease is absolutely incredible. Last year, we took five tractor trailer loads of grease out of that wet well. And I would expect a similar number here uh this year. Um, we have always contracted with Klein Services. They're out of Pennsylvania. They actually haul the grease back. Um, they're a very reputable contractor. They do a lot of business with uh W S S C, with D C Water. Um, they contract, they have done this for us for the past ten years since we completed the Willow Lane Pump Station. So I bring that forward tonight and I ask for a twenty percent contingency just because we don't know exactly how much grease that we're going to be ending, ending up taking out of there. But we know it's generally been in the forty thousand dollar range, so I would ask for your approval on that. And finally, the uh the third contract that we have is for a new crane truck. And that is the truck that our lead mechanic Danny Wood drives. The truck that he is currently driving is a two thousand and five. Um, and we are planning to keep that truck. We just need to have a frontline truck um that is a little more serviceable. Currently, the rear went out on that truck and we're without a crane. And we really need to have both the new truck and the backup. Um, as you may know, um about two years ago, we actually found a new crane truck. We had this in the budget to buy and the council approved the new crane truck. And before we could finalize the deal after council approval, the dealership at that time, which was down in Florida, actually sold the truck to someone else. So uh we lost that crane truck. This time around, um, we're looking to utilize the state contract and to purchase the truck. As you can see, as with all other uh vehicular equipment, the cost is quite high. It's a two hundred thousand dollar vehicle, two hundred and two, to be specific. And what we would look for today is to approve that purchase. Um, but it will take approximately a year to get that vehicle once approved, so it is quite a challenge. Uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. That was all three of them. I didn't separate them off, that is all three, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on Councilman Goldsmith.
Does your crane truck have any additional capacity capability? Or would you just?
Well, it is, it is a little bit larger crane than it's an eight thousand pound lift instead of a six thousand pound lift. We use them all the time because, of course, having to pull pumps and all of the pump stations, we actually have a man bucket that we can put on the end of it to go down into deep manholes and things like that as well. Um, so because we utilize it at the plant for pulling pumps and that kind of thing at the plant as well, lifting anything heavy, it's extremely important for us in our operation. Uh, we would, we are potentially gonna, in the new budget, gonna hire a new mechanic. Um, we're still w- working on that consideration. But again, we have an older truck that does not have a crane that currently um um Ricky Welch drives uh as another mechanic for us. And we'd like to be able to provide the two thousand and five crane for Ricky to drive. Danny can drive the new one and then the new mechanic would drive the truck that currently is used by Ricky. So I I I think that's kind of the succession planning that we have in that situation. But we aren't looking to get rid of a vehicle and replace it. We're just trying to take it off of full-time use because we need one that we can depend on. And here again, that that vehicle, by the time we get it, will be almost twenty years old.
Mr. Stahl, are all these in the budget now?
They are, we um uh each one of them, the uh the Centas contract, the contract for the uniforms for the guys is in the contract. I mean, excuse me, is in the budget and it's in the new budget as well. And we are anticipating that that will actually reduce our costs some in the new budget. So we we feel that it would be very good to implement that. The Willow Lane Pump Station uh is in the budget as well, the cleaning out of that. We have always budgeted for that item because we do have to clean the grease out on an annual basis. And we are going to use the facility renewal funds for the truck that we're planning to purchase. So we have a savings account basically for the vehicles and we would be using the savings account that we have previously saved up with cash.
Questions from council?
You asked my question, thank you.
Director Stahl, what have we spent on maintenance for the current crane truck?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear.
What have we spent on maintenance for the current crane truck?
What happens with maintenance, is that what you said?
What have we spent on maintenance?
How much have we spent?
Oh, my goodness, um, the new, we just bought the new rear for that today. The cost of the rear itself was two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars just for the rear. Uh, maintenance has been rising. It is, uh, it has the six-liter uh Ford diesel engine, which is prone to problems. Um, we have uh currently, um, and I I'm trying to remember uh if we've actually had to outsource anything with respect to that truck. Most of the time, we have fixed everything in-house. So our mechanics generally, Danny's um fixing it, so the costs um should go down. Of course, when we initially buy the truck, it will be under warranty and we will be able to um have an extended period of time where we can uh expect a very low maintenance as compared to the old vehicle. But the the cost per mile for that vehicle is high.
Thank you.
Council, I am looking for a consensus to move this forward.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilwoman Brian Ward?
Yes. I move, yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
I agree, I move forward, thank you.
The consensus is to move this forward to legislation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to the legislations. Mr. Manuel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Junior Mayor, Town Council. Uh, before you tonight, Resolution twenty-three dash twelve Centas Contract, Resolution Concerning Centas Uniform and Facility Service Contract for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for uniform rental and facility services and all matters relating thereto.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolutions twenty-three through twelve as presented?
I move we accept Resolution twenty-three dash twelve Centas Contracts.
Do I have a second?
Second is motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manuel, would you please present the next resolution?
Yes. Madam Junior Mayor, Resolution twenty-two dash thirteen Willow Lane Pump Station Cleaning Contract. A resolution concerning Willow Lane Pump Station Cleaning Contract for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for the cleaning of accumulated fats, oils and grease from pump station wet well and the hauling and disposal of said accumulation and all matters relating thereto.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolutions twenty-three dash thirteen as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manuel, would you please present the next resolution?
Yes, Madam Junior Mayor, Resolution twenty-three dash fourteen F five fifty crane truck replacement. A resolution concerning F five fifty crane truck replacement for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement of a Ford F five fifty crane truck for the use by the Town of La Plata Operations Department and all matters relating thereto.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolutions twenty-three dash fourteen as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution twenty-three dash fourteen as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda are commission reports. Councilman Goldsmith.
Uh, we still have not had a meeting with the December who board. We'll have one tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
Thank you, Councilman Colin.
Sure. Yeah, that's good, thank you. No report at this time, thank you.
Junior Mayor, protect Penny Cook?
No. No updates.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Uh, the um scheduled Park and Recreation Commission meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has been postponed or canceled. So we'll be meeting again in May. And I would just add that the um County Parks Department is having their um public meeting tomorrow uh to uh see the final drafts of the uh three parks that they've been working on, including what they call La Plata Farm, which is the properly located to the North Will's Park. I will not be able to attend, so I've advised them of that. But I believe, um, I'm not sure is Ms. Phelps is going on that because she's on the, I'm sorry, Ms. Phelps is uh, she's on the task force as well. And once the meeting is over, those uh those final drafts will be posted on their website for review. Thank you.
James?
Thank you very much. We do have a few upcoming events. Um, Celebrate La Plata is being held on the last Saturday of this month where we have the amazing bed races. So make sure that you uh come and uh take in these festivities. And also, um, on Sunday, the twenty-ninth of April is Autism Event at Will's Park. It's the twenty-ninth?
Sorry.
Thirty, the thirtieth. Um, last year I was there, it's amazing, so mark your calendars. We'll have more information that will come out of that, but uh it is a really neat event that highlights uh autism and um the abilities, not the disabilities. So uh the chief is really good at uh working with the pathfinders on that, so. And before we um have the Junior Mayor Pro Tem, I mean, the Junior Mayor, Zoe. and before we um, have the junior mayor pro tem, I mean, the junior mayor, Zoe, uh, close this meeting, I want to thank these amazing young ladies. How old are you?
Eleven.
Okay, so I'm safe for a few more years, but I don't know. I think I have two contenders here that might run for council in the future. So Mayor, it's all yours?
Thank you all for coming tonight. I would like to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
I second it. Can I second it? I'm seconding it. Yep.
Meeting adjourned. Have a great night.